Little County Attorney here, and that's the big one back there. We're here tonight, and we're here for the monthly Union County meeting. And this public meeting is where the official business policy and public matter of Union County is formulated, presented, and discussed and approved. We're gonna have a multitude of topics tonight. I just ask that everybody keep their decor. After everything is over with, the Commissioner may or may not open up a question and answer session. During that time, please feel free to ask any questions about the agenda items, okay? If you have a question that's not on the agenda, please feel free to contact the Commissioner's office, leave your question, contact information, they'll get back with you. But all questions need to pertain to the agenda items today. All right, thank you.
Thank you, William. Item number one is a special presentation. It's ACCG Legislative Service Award presentation by Mr. Clint Mueller and Gabriel Carter of ACCG, which is Association of County Commissioners, to represent, or Representative Stan Gunner. So I'm gonna ask them to all come up this way, are you able? Mr. Gunner? Okay. I'll just come ahead and just be sure, we wanna get a picture when we get through.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clint Mueller. I'm the Legislative Director for ACCG, stands for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. We're an instrumentality of the counties across the state. We represent all 159 counties in our state. We have, obviously, a lot of counties in Georgia, second only to Texas. Every year, we work with the General Assembly to try to pass legislations that are good for the counties across the state. And every year, we select just a few legislators to give legislative awards to that have really helped us with pieces of legislation to better county government. This year, Representative Gunner has helped us with some legislation. As you know, during the pandemic, we've had quite a backlog in our court system. It's been very difficult to have, especially jury trials during that time. And so, a lot of cases have not been heard yet. And so, we're trying to do things to speed things up and hear these cases. And there's a lot we can do with technology. Representative Gunner helped pass some legislation that allows us to use technology to do more teleconferencing in the court system. And he's working on a lot of initiatives to help us speed things up. I know the Governor right now has made some grant funding available to the courts to help try to get rid of the backlog. We've got a lot of actually violent offenders out there sitting in our county jails, and they haven't had their day in court yet. And we need to, we need to go ahead now, move beyond the pandemic. And what Representative Gunner has done is he's helped us in that effort. So we really appreciate what he's doing. He's definitely, even though he's a fairly new legislator at the Capitol, he's not looked at as a new legislator. His years of experience working in the criminal justice system, I think he's, right off the bat, he's, I know he's, the Speaker of the House leans on him heavily to help on legislation, and so do other legislators down there. So you all have somebody who's representing your community that's very well respected down there at the State General Assembly. I want y'all to know that he is looked to on lots of pieces of legislation. We really appreciate the work that he's done on behalf of all the counties in the state of Georgia. So tonight, and I have with me Gabriel Carter. Gabe Carter is, he does our lobbying on our public safety and the courts-related issues down there at the State Capitol. Deborah Nesbit, Gabe's brand-new, by the way. Deborah Nesbit, who was before Gabe, she's now working with the Superior Court Judges' Council, so she's no longer with our association. But this award is of your courthouse here in Union County. This is the Union County Courthouse. We had a photographer that went around the state of Georgia, and he photographed every single courthouse in the state of Georgia. And we actually have a courthouse book, I believe it's available, you can buy it on Amazon, but it's a, it's a book of all the courthouses in the state of Georgia, and tells you a little bit about each courthouse. This is one of those photos that came from that. So Representative Gunner, I know you've got an injury there, so.
Over the years, I've spent a lot of time down at the Capitol as a DA and judge, and ACCG has been a partner with us in a lot of legislation. You know, they're great folks to work with. They do an important job for all the counties across the state, and it made my job a lot easier, working with them. So I, that's a group of folks down there that I trust, and I listen to them when they come to me with legislation or with problems that they have with legislation. So I wanna thank you for this recognition. Don't know how much I deserve it, but I do appreciate it. And I thank you for the picture, it's beautiful.
I'm now gonna ask Sid Turner and anybody else that needs to come up with you, Sid, Sons of the American Revolution, Spaking Presentation, Firefighter Sheriff's Deputy EMS Award Presentation. Come on up to the podium, George.
I'm gonna be giving the, three awards, one to the Sheriff's Department, one to the Fire Department, and one to the Emergency Medical Service. And I'm gonna start out with the Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Andrew Glass, he started his career with the Sheriff's Department in 2012. And during his career at the Union County Sheriff's Office, he started as a patrol deputy working night shift. While working on the night shift, he has accomplished many specialized certifications. He has obtained a Supervisory Certification, Field Training Officer Certification, SWAT, Police Counter Sniper, and multiple other certifications. He's also obtained a Bachelor Degree in Criminal Justice while working night shift as a patrol shift commander. Sergeant Glass has provided great leadership to the Union County Sheriff's Office, and has developed and passed on his skills to the people that work under him in the department, and he's a real asset to the county and the department. And for that, I want to present him a Sons of the American Revolution Law Enforcement Commendation Medal. While we're on him, I'd like to say that while you folks are asleep about every other night, he's out here from dark till daylight, running the shift, looking after us. And I'm just so proud to have him, and I'm not taking anything away from him getting us awarded tonight, but we've got some quality people here, and I'm really appreciative of that, and especially Andrew. He does what, what he's asked, he knows what to do without being asked, and that makes it really good for us, and we appreciate him. Next, I want to present an award to the Fire Department. And the recipient of that is Sergeant Pat Schmidt. He started his career in volunteer fire service and received his initial fire training. When he was hired as a full-time firefighter in Union County in 2007, he completed medical training and licensed, and is licensed in the state of Georgia as an emergency medical technician. His knowledge and experience are valuable, not only to the daily operation of the department, but also to the education of the citizens of Union County on fire safety. He was instrumental in developing the fire safety education programs that are conducted in our community and in our school system. He oversees and conducts these programs on fire safety. And he goes above and beyond, looking out after his firefighter's safety as well. And for that, I'd like to present him with a Fire Safety Commendation Medal.
Real quick, Pat, Sergeant Schmidt here. He has been instrumental in our education program. And you know, fire safety is a community kind of a job, and it takes everybody to be able to get in and out there, people in our house, people in the schools, people in the businesses. So he pretty much started our program from scratch in his development, what it is today. So if your kids come home, or your grandkids come home and say, hey, we done this about the Fire Department, that is a big contribution from Pat. So he did a great job, thank you.
Next, I'd like to present an award to the Union General Ambulance Service. And the medal will go to Felicia Asher. She's a paramedic. Felicia completed paramedic school in 2018, and with her attention to detail results in the care of a level beyond her years of experience. She's completed nursing school and became a licensed registered nurse while continuing to work full-time. She can be trusted to care of patients with little or no supervision. She's an asset to the Emergency Medical Service and to our community. I'd like to commit to her with a Commendation Medal. Well, you're not done yet. Years ago, one of our members passed away, and he had a massive heart attack. And they called the Emergency Medical Services over to take care of him, and even though they didn't save his life, his widow is really appreciative and was really impressed with the professionalism of the medical service. And she wanted to initiate something to show her appreciation. So we created in our chapter the Murray King Award. And I want to call up Kendra King to present the Murray King Award.
Felicia, I'm so glad to meet you tonight as the wife of Murray King. I want to tell you that the things that I've read and what Sid has told me about you and your background and your go-getting attitude has really impressed me, because Murray was the guy who started out with Ma Bell in the mailroom sorting mail. And he worked through the various components of the company and retired with 33 years' service as a supervisor. So you go, girl. And I want to present you the award recognizing your contribution to our community. By the way, as Sid said, I'm thanking all of the EMS workers that have assisted me for that particular event nobody cares. Along with that, friends and family members put together an awards fund, and we would like to also present you with a check, and I thought that would be nice. So we have that for you as well. And again, I'm so pleased to meet you, and I look forward to following you throughout the years in your career in Union County. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Lastly, did you want to say anything? We appreciate you doing what you do. Got some cute kids back there, but he just couldn't get them to come up here, really. In Union County, a lot of people don't realize what our emergency services people do for the county. It's incredible what they do, and they're the unsung heroes that just kind of sit, sit back and do their job, like our 911 folks and others that don't get a lot of recognition. But we're certainly proud that they chose to recognize these folks tonight, and they certainly deserve it. Item number three is an agreement renewal with the Correctional Resource Group for the Food Service for Inmates at the Union County Jail. Is Sheriff still, yeah, Sheriff's still back there? I don't know if he ever goes into the kitchen and partakes of any of that food or not, but anyway, just to let you know, the contract's effective date is January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022. Cost increase, and these are based on new numbers that are coming out in the public, cost increase for 2022 will be 2.1%, or approximately $10,000 would be the extra cost this next year for jail meals. All of these things that involve incarcerating people, costs a lot of money. Item number four is an agreement between Lideo's Security Detection and Automation Incorporated for the annual maintenance and repair for the X-ray machines and metal detectors at both entrances to the Union County Courthouse. Both, all of y'all would have come through one or the other. The amount of this contract is $11,400, and is effective from November 30th, 2021, to November the 29th, 2022. Another item that you don't really think about, the $11,400, just to try to keep the, keep the equipment running. Item number five is an agreement between CRSA Probation Services Incorporated in Union County for probation services to the probate court. And this is very unusual, there is no cost to Union County for this service. This is one of the very few covered, and it's covered by the people who are actually placed on probation, having to pay their own fees, so there's no charge to the county for that. Item six is an agreement between Public Services Incorporated in Union County for transportation and disposal of solid waste from the Union County Transfer Station. Cost of this contract will be a fee of $45.50 per ton of solid waste hauled from the Union County Transfer Station. This agreement is effective for the duration of one year from November 22nd, 2021. And we appreciate the public who has had to put up with some, a lot of changes over at the transfer station. There will continue to be changes at the transfer station for the next several months until we get everything ironed out. We're not accustomed to be in that business, but we, because of the fate and the way that things happen, we ended, we've ended up in it. So our goal now is try to keep our costs down to the bare minimum, and maybe even at some point be able to arrive a positive revenue figure from over there. Item number seven is a lease agreement between Positive Pathways Incorporated in Union County for the use of office and meeting space located at 243 Hunt Martin Street, Glazier, an amount of $1 per month. The duration of this lease will be from December 1st, 2021, to November the 30th, 2022. And this is known as the Mary House, and this is a house we purchased back when we bought the drug court property where they have, right across from the Union County Library. Excuse me. And so, they have, they have, this group has decided and came to the county requesting that people that have had, and we have a lot of people in the county, not some that we see and notice, but a lot of people that have drug and alcohol issues. And we've got several different venues where they can go to seek help. This is a new one, it's gonna be there, be available for them, and we're very excited about it. It's been a great project, working with the state and with the county to get this ready and open, and just had the grand opening this, this last week. And we're very proud of the people that are there, and all the people that are gonna be aided and assisted because it is there and available in our county. These next two are grant awards. The seven, really, item seven and eight, Accountability Courts Grant for Family Drug Treatment Court in the amount of $36,324. This grant period is from October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022. This grant comes from the state of Georgia through the federal program. Item seven and eight award is made under the Accountability Courts Grant Program. The purpose of the Accountability Court Grants Program is to make grants to local courts and judicial circuits, and to collaborate with pilot programs to establish specialty courts or dockets to address offenders treated for drug charges and or mental health issues. This grant program is subject to administrative rules established by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And Judge Gunner was the judge, Superior Court Judge, he was very active in this program. And a lot of Union County citizens and families have been held together and put together, and now have a really successful life because they've gone through this two-year, two-year program of intensive probation, following, working. And when you go to their graduation, usually they have seven or eight graduate every three to, three to four months. And when you go to those grant, to those graduations, I can assure you, you will not leave there without a tear in your eye, because you see the families that have come together, that have been apart, and now are back together, and they're also able to give them a clear bill of health on their charges. So they're like, after that two-year program they passed, they clear their charges, they're able to get back on their life, get back in order, in a very, very small rate of recidivism. So we're very proud of that, and thank you, Judge, very much for, he was always very dedicated to that, and we appreciate it. And number nine is an additional grant Accountability Courts Grant for Law Enforcement in the amount of $15,603. This grant period is from January 1st to June 20th, 2022. And again, this is part of the same, the same work that they do for the people of Union County. Item 10 is a memorandum of understanding. This memorandum of understanding between Union County Schools and Union County to set the terms for Union County to apply for and confer funds from the state of Georgia for the public safety officials and first responders supplemental grant. The memorandum of understanding will allow Union County to apply for the grant on behalf of Union County Schools for the eligible full-time certified law enforcement officers that are employed by the school system, provide them with a $1,000 pay supplement. Item number nine is a notice of county meetings scheduled changed. Our county meetings are the third Thursday of each month. Occasionally, usually once or twice a year, sometimes three, but we have to make a change based on other events that come up. So county meetings, county meetings are held on those dates. On January 18th, it'll be, I'm sorry, the third Thursday of each month, on the 22nd, except for January meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, January the 15th. So don't come here thinking we're hiding from you. So the January meeting will be on the 18th due to conflict in scheduling. Item number 12 is a grant application. Union County submitted a grant application to the State Road and Tollway Authority for a, it's called GTIB, G-T-I-B, Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank, a program grant for the intersection improvement at the Patterson Drive and Deep South Farm Road, which is the entrance to the Union General Hospital. GTIB is a competitive grant program, with each application of value based on engineering value, economic impact, local matching funds, projected feasibility, and proximity to construction. If awarded this grant, we can use a small portion, portion of our current SLOSS funds under Roads and Bridges Project to fund our match. This is a project that could have been funded using T-SLOSS funds, had the T-SLOSS focused, but has been only given. Since Union County General Hospital is starting construction on their new 42,000-square-foot medical office building, this is an even more urgent intersection to make improvements to. Luckily, we have had some traffic engineers looking into this for some time, so even prior to the infrastructure grant money that's hopefully gonna be made available, we are ahead of, ahead of that schedule, and we think we have a very good opportunity of getting some good funding for this intersection, which is even gonna be more important now that the project is having the new doctor's offices facility added to 42,000 square feet. Item 13 is adopting a moratorium on cryptocurrency mining sites. And this is, some of you have heard something about it. I think when Andrews and Murphy first got into doing a facility for this, and I'm not going to go into the details tonight just because of time, but a lot of people over here started hearing about things that were going on over there in North Carolina, and worried, what are we gonna do in Union County? How are we gonna protect our citizens? So we just set up a six-month moratorium on anybody coming up with one of those. Doesn't mean it can't happen within the six months, it just means we're gonna, we're gonna be working with it, and we'll have to come up with guidelines to, to make it possible. So if somebody does come up and do one of these, they have to follow the current guidelines. And since this is a new subject, one that we've never dealt with in the county here, we felt like we needed this time to get together and get with other experts, see what the pluses and minuses are. This is basically these banks of computers, and if you've got enough of them, apparently they require a lot of cooling, and they make a noise, and it requires some big fans, fans to keep them cool. So that's the main purpose and the main, main concern. If you've got a regular small bank of crypto searching currency, whatever the heck that ends up being, then they don't, they don't cause much of a problem. But if you've got a big concentrated facility like they do in Murphy, it could be a problem potentially. So we're just trying to prepare for the future on that, so that everybody that's got something that can kind of relax, so we have a chance to look at it. Item 14 through 19 is business license. The only purpose that we do business license in the county is for rental units. So these are Brenda Whitaker Rental, Bar Ridge Cabin. So these are Brenda Whitaker Rental, Barry Ridge Cabin, Flaherty Peter and Jamie D. Getaway, Triple L Cabsins, and Triple L Cabsins. One's on forty-eight five oh eight, one's on one hundred five oh eight. We're wrapping up here toward the end pretty quickly. We have Cindy Vander, Vanderreid, who's asked to say a few words on SPOS. We have, uh, three minutes' time, and it has to be on a subject that you haven't talked about before.
My name is Cindy Vanderreid, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, last month I spoke about T-SPOS and why I believe it did not pass. I also spoke about truth, honesty, and transparency when it came to spending our tax dollars. Since then, I did some research on SPOS, and it appears that some of the rules are not being followed as required by OCGA forty-eight dash eight dash one twenty-two, which is county SPOS law. I have two examples. The first one is money from SPOS on the projects list under Parks and Recreation, Upgrades, Improvements, Equipment and Vehicles. There's an estimate on here of over three million dollars, but what we actually spent was over seven million dollars. The project list does not talk about building anything, however. The difference in the money is because we built a new gym across from the high school, which was over the four, which was over four million dollars. The second example I had is money that was spent for the Brian Herbert Reese Home Place was over two hundred thousand dollars with SPOS three money and two hundred thousand dollars from SPOS four money for park rentals. Um, there was a question and answer put in the paper, and one of the questions was, with the very bad economic times, why are we spending this much money now? And the answer was that all of these SPOS sales tax projects that you, that were voted on by you, the citizens of the county. The one exception is the Brian Herbert Reese Home Place project being constructed by grant funds. So my question is, why would we be spending over four hundred thousand dollars of SPOS money when we were told that it was going to be funded by grant money? Per the SPOS guidelines, all approved projects must be funded as provided under the Dickey case. Counties should be careful not to overestimate SPOS revenues, thereby requiring the use of other county funds to make up any shortfalls. The commissioner stated that you can't go back and add something once you start SPOS, and that's why they come up with as many projects as they can. There's no obligation on the county to complete all projects on the list should the sales tax revenues fall short or if the costs are too high to complete them. This is not a true statement. In Appendix A of the SPOS law, OCGA forty-eight dash eight dash one ten, if the projects that are not approved in a prior SPOS referendum have become infeasible, counties and municipalities can provide a modified purpose with voter approval. So I don't ever remember any modifications coming up for a vote by the taxpayers on any of the projects that were not able to be done or completed. I found two examples of where the projects were abandoned after the SPOS was passed with voters thinking they could, that, that, this is what they were voting on. So we were told that we needed to expand and renovate the jail, and the figure given was two million dollars. After SPOS passed, the expansion of the jail, jail was postponed due to lack of funding. The second project was funding of solid waste transfer. Five minutes. Did you change it from last week or last month? Okay, um, the only thing I was going to say was I actually had a solution, hopefully. There's a sample, um, and I have one here, I was passing it out, a sample annual report that lists project by project, how much is actually the project cost, how much we actually spent, and it gives a detailed outline. So what's really put out is not clear to us as to exactly where the money's going for the projects. So this is a very detailed report, and I was just hoping that we would maybe have more transparency on how this lost tax dollars were actually being spent. And I believe that this would answer a lot of the questions that have been asked here in the county meetings about the money and how much is being spent for each project. That's really what we would like to know.
And we'll let some of y'all know, uh, I've tried to pass off and be above the fray over the last few months as different people and citizens have come in and, and made statements, letters to the editor, different topics. Several about SPOS because she's used, tied on to another lady who has done SPOS stuff forever. We have, and will, at the appropriate time, present all the details related to SPOS. We only do SPOS legally. We have a paid consultant that follows everything we do related to SPOS. And we are proud of the job of what we have done with the amount of money we've had to do with. We have taken your money as you pay in sales tax, and we've been very careful and very educated in how we do and spend that money. And when I hear many of the things, comments from her and comments from other people, and I, I'm not sure that they mean, they mean to be mean, or they mean to be disrespectful. But we've been doing this for years, and that's our job. And we know what we're doing, and we know how to do it, we know how to do it legal, and if we do it, we're going to do it legal. And I think, uh, probably one other thing recently is, I think this is a lady that had a fire just recently at her property, and, uh, our fire department was out there. I don't know what they were able to save or not save, but our fire department, because we have a great fire department, funded by SPOS, just about totally, uh, they were able to go out there and assist this lady with her, her fire issue.
Her name is Cindy.
So I'm, I hope that helps.
Did you answer the question, or did you only just discredit her and give up her personal information?
I'm not talking to you, ma'am. I'm sorry. You're not, you're not on the agenda to talk about this, and so we will not take comments on this.
I'm just trying to protect my fellow citizens.
We have seen and heard your reports before.
Excuse me?
We'll be addressing those later on in the program, in the meetings following this too. So everybody that's made statements, if they were not accurate, they will be addressed at future county meetings. Item number twenty-one is, uh, commissioner comments. And one of the, one of those that we're going to talk about is tonight, is, uh, one of the first ones. Thanks for attending the December county meeting. It is hoped that the community will remember the real reason for the Christmas season and that the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ, has been a very active year. And our major wish is that COVID nineteen and other serious illnesses continue to decrease to a reasonable rate. We will discuss future projects next year, but our meetings will take on a different culture. And for those who have spent the past several months making false or inaccurate statements about the county operation, your statements may be directly addressed from the podium in a calm, peaceful, and respective manner. Public meeting is now officially adjourned, and we're going to take public comment period, we're going to take questions. We're going to let each person will speak, because this meeting's been a little, a little long, uh, come up with, uh, one question. But before we do that, I'm going to start. And I want to respond to, and there have been meaning, but I want to respond to a, uh, just one of the latest, actually the latest, letter to the editor in the North Georgia News on twelve-three from Jonathan Smith. So I wanted to first just read, read his letter. The North Georgia News, its December third, twenty-one edition advertised the sole commissioner's twenty-two proposed budget hearing was scheduled for the next day. How's that for advanced public notice? Questions were asked of how the proposed twenty-two budget compared to that of twenty-one. With a ten-page handout of tables and multicolored graphs, which we're usually complaining about because we didn't give enough information, uh, the ten pages, no summary of the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget or actual expenditures or projections were included for a year-to-year comparison. Several persons asked for this information, but were told it is very complicated. See me after the meeting, or the file on open records requests. Without that information, it was difficult to ask complete or accurate questions. Staff had hastily provided copies of the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget, which we appreciate that they went to that effort to do that, because we've never had anybody ask it twenty years that I've been here for the twenty-one budget when we're discussing the twenty-two budget. But nevertheless, staff got it for them. This is pretty meaningless, as the sole commissioner is only accepting questions and comments at the twelve-three twenty-one public hearing and not the second reading on December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Of course, that was inaccurate, where he reads, approves, slaps a gavel for his proposed budget without further comment. The proposed budget generally shows the expenditures for a number of areas. Obviously, no reserve fund category was shown. We were informed that it was included somewhere in the transfers to other funds, a category which constitutes nearly twenty-five percent, over five million dollars of the total county budget. Citizens were told that part of the previous seventeen percent millage rate increase, millage increase, was to replace reserve funds that were likely used to fund two unbudgeted land purchases, shoe factory and hospital site. In the county's portion of the nearly two point five million semi-private gun range, none of these expenditures had been identified or budgeted, but presumably paid for through the reserve fund within the transfers to other funds category. Reserve funds and the expenditures within this fund need to be identified, identified and not become a giant slush fund to pay for the sole commissioner's pet projects without public knowledge or input. Varying twenty-five percent of the budget from the public scrutiny is not an open and transparent government, which I certainly would agree. After all, it is our money, even though he refers to it as one of his pots of money. How about some transparency and accountability for the buried twenty-five percent of the budget? On a brighter note, the sole commissioner did not threaten or eject anybody from the citizens from the meeting as an improvement over his recent reactions to challenges to his policies and sole decision. Signed by Jonathan Smith. And I'm just going to read, I had our county director work with, uh, details and just a short, not near this long, and I'm sorry that, that this one took so long. But it's interesting that each of the last four or five county meetings, public meetings, there's been one person designated in the court, in the courtroom to either make a scene or to do something to ask, to be, be it enough to be asked or be rejected. We've never had that in the history of this county, but we have had that of late. So I'm not going to comment on it, except to say, those that were asked to leave deserve to be asked to leave. And we're going to have civil and obedient meetings from this point forward. I'd like to respond, this is a response here, editor. I'd like, I would like to respond to several of the items put forth by Jonathan Smith in the letter titled, Your Money. The twenty-twenty-two proposed budget was run in both the November twenty-fourth, twenty, November twenty-four, twenty twenty-one edition of the paper, and also the December first, twenty twenty-one edition of the North Georgia News. The budget was also posted on the Union County Government website, both entrance doors to the courthouse and the courthouse bulletin board, all on November the fourth, twenty twenty-one. We are required by state law to advertise at least a full week before any public hearing we comply. The nature of the public hearings allowed for questions and public input, which were allowed at both meetings. However, no questions were asked at the second meeting, zero. As you said, we did provide copies of the twenty-twenty-one budget, but our year is not finished yet. This is not the end of the year, it's just some of the actions, actions tonight that we had to pay extra on the, on the jail. So we did not have an actual expenditure to compare to every single item. On the reserve funds, governmental accounting is complicated, very, very complicated and different from that of the public accounting. It is set by federal guidelines and state guidelines and has to be followed and audited. Our future balance or reserve funds were not predicted to be added to or taken away from in twenty twenty-two. That is why they were not listed on the twenty-twenty-two budget. Our reserve funds are not accounted for in our transfer to other funds, as they are not transfers. However, the contents of the transfers to other funds were explained in the public hearing, and you are welcome to come in to our office and get a full explanation if you need it. We encourage transparency and are more than happy to answer any questions through coming to the office, calling the office, or open records requests. So at this point, uh, if anyone has any, uh, questions about an agenda item, something we've talked about, you're welcome to raise your hand. I have one question each person. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Okay, so when I spoke before, when I got up and I was on the agenda, I am not sure if that's what you mean when you say about my reports, but you will remember that I was speaking directly about integrity and the lack of integrity that I've seen in you. And now I am seeing that you say that people asked to leave deserve it. I saw at the last meeting, the gentleman, you told him that if he didn't like what you were saying, he could leave, and he very calmly said, I'm not leaving, and then you had him escorted out. Um, he was not causing chaos. You say, excuse me, you say that, um, that you are being above the fray of the citizens, but all I'm seeing is that we're asking questions and holding you accountable. So now I see that since we've started doing that, you have this giant presence of police in here. You have the lawyer come up, you've changed the rules now to where last time, I, you said five minutes last time, and am I incorrect about that? Oh, I'm sorry, that's not my question. And now it's three minutes. So I see that you are really working hard to keep us from being heard, and that even further shows me your lack of integrity, because that is not how people in integrity behave.